Good evening, everyone. Hi, thank you for your patience. And welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 3, 2023. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing matters of the employment history of particular persons, potential litigation, matters made confidential by federal and state privacy laws, FERPA and ED Law 2D, and to receive advice from council subject to Board approval. May I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:45? Hillary, may I have a second? Ryan, all in favor? And if everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so although we as a district adopted our annual budget at our last regularly scheduled meeting here in March before spring break, budget season is not quite over. Tonight, we have our required budget hearing, as well as a presentation tonight, a budget presentation from the Chappaqua Public Library. As a result, because of the hearing, we are going to add an additional public comment period after that budget hearing and library presentation, so there will be an opportunity to comment on that, and then we will go into the rest of our meeting and still have our normal public comment period. I just wanted to mention that. We'll also, during the President's Report, you'll see that we'll be voting on approving the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association budget, the proposed budget for the 2022-2024 school year, as well as their nominating committee slate, so budget season definitely continues. And I want to remind the community that the culmination of all of this budget talk is Election Day for both the library budget and our school district budget, as well as the school board and the library board candidates, and that is less than two weeks away on May 16. I encourage everyone to not only vote, but also to please attend or watch the candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters on Wednesday, May 10 at 7:30 PM. This will take place in Town Hall, or you can watch via Zoom. It will enable you to learn a little bit more about the four candidates that are vying for two seats on the school board that will be vacated when Warren and I both step down off the board at the end of June. And after watching the forum, please, please, please come out and vote on May 16. Voting for the entire community takes place at the Greeley High School Auditorium from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. There is still time to register and get an absentee ballot if you need one. All of this can be done with our wonderful clerk, Lisa Elsner, who is on the second floor of the district office. You can call or visit her if you need assistance. And again, please let your voice be heard on May 16. There are two issues that I want to mention tonight, issues that we have received a good amount of mail on, and I know Dr. Ackerman will be addressing them as well in the Superintendent's Report, but I just wanted to mention them in the President's Report as well. The first is teacher retention and tenure. We have gotten a number of letters and questions from parents concerning teachers who will not be returning to the district next year, and I just want to say on behalf of the Board how much we value our teachers and how important it is to us that we hire and retain excellent teachers for the benefit of all of our district families. We have a tremendous structure to support our new and/or untenured teachers and a very thorough and comprehensive evaluation process leading up to tenure determinations. Again, Dr. Ackerman will detail this so that everyone understands this process a bit better. I also want to mention that it's the Board role in terms of teachers to oversee this rigorous process, which we do, and we do it thoroughly, but I just want to reiterate that it is important to the Board that both our teachers and our students feel supported in all of our classrooms, and again, there'll be more of this and more details on this in the Superintendent's Report. The second issue on which we continue to receive feedback is school safety. In light of recent events and increasing gun violence in this country, we know that safety and security is foremost in everyone's minds. I want to thank Dr. Ackerman for hosting four safety and security forums so as to give as many community members as possible an opportunity to learn what safety measures are in place throughout the district, what we continually do to make sure our buildings and our students remain safe, what measures we are considering moving forward, and what guides are thinking in our decision-making process in terms of implementing additional security measures. The presentation that Dr. Ackerman and the administration put together was very thorough and informative, and I believe we will be sharing this at some point online, but first, as many of you already know, we have sent out another survey to get direct and specific feedback on security enhancements that our community and our staff members support. We are asking all of you to please take the time to fill out this survey. It is open until May 17 because the results will be taken into consideration along with a number of other important and relevant factors in determining the best path forward to keep our schools and our students and our staff as safe as possible. I also want to reiterate that this is a complex issue. We, as a public school district, can only do so much to prevent gun violence when our elected officials cannot reach agreement on banning or restricting access to dangerous assault weapons. There is also no singular solution here. There is not one answer to this problem, nor is there one single viewpoint that represents this entire community. We, as your school board representatives, are here to listen to all voices and are tasked with making an intelligent, informed decision as to how best to secure our schools, and we cannot make a decision based purely on fear or anger or an emotion, no matter how strong that emotional component may be. So I want to say on behalf of the Board that we understand your fears and your sense of urgency. We feel it as well. We are all parents ourselves, and we all want the same protections for our children as you do, and we will continue to do our best to keep everyone in this community as safe as we possibly can. Again, we are asking that you please take the survey and know that we are working very hard to tackle a very challenging issue, and we will keep you informed every step of the way. So I think what I'd like to do is finish up the President's Report. We have one item here which is going over and approving the West Putt budget. So I'd like to go to 1.1.1, and then we can turn it over to the hearing and the presentations. So Item 1.1.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association proposed 2023 to 2024 budget and nominating committee slate and authorizes the Board President to sign the WPSBA Annual Meeting Ballot. Can I have a motion for 1.1.1 from Warren? May I have a second? Any questions or comments? I don't know, Hillary, since you're a rep, if there's anything that you wanted to say?
No, I think that the officers, um, sorry. I think that the proposed slate of officers is good. They are largely officers who have been, you know, very active in West Putt and have shown a real dedication to supporting all the kids in the region and are very open to listening to their member districts. I found that through the whole year of being the advocacy liaison to West Putt, and, you know, will continue to serve in that role. And I feel very good that they are on top of fiscal management, they're not, you know, spending money that they shouldn't be spending, and the candidate slate looks good to me.
Okay, great. And their program has-
West Putts done great work for us and all the other member districts, so I'm happy to support them.
Okay, me too. So any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I will turn it over to Christine. Thank you.
So we're going to open up the budget hearing. This is our shortest budget presentation of our series of moments where we share what the budget will look like next year, and the budget has been adopted, so there can't be any adjustments at this point. This is a formality and the regulations that we need to follow, so Andrew and I will go very briefly through this presentation. It'll be online as well, but if you want more, a deeper understanding of the budget, all of our presentations are online on our website, our videos, our presentations, and you can certainly reach out to Andrew and I, we can meet with you. This is just not a moment in time where we receive feedback and make adjustments because the budget has been adopted. And so just as a reminder, our budget proposed for next year that will be up for voter consideration is about $138 million, which is about a $4.3 million increase from this year's budget, and that falls within our levy limit, so we need a majority of our voters to approve it for it to move forward. It is based on our Board's three strategic questions. The first is to make sure that we are presenting a budget that is fiscally responsible, that we are providing a robust teaching and learning experience for all of our students, and that we're supporting social-emotional learning throughout the district. And then, as the community may or may not be aware, we are redoing our strategic plan currently where we're identifying what our target areas are moving into the future, but this has been the foundation of our budgeting process over the past five years in our district, and we have structured our budget in a way where we will be able to support what our new strategic initiatives are moving forward, which will be presented at either the first or second meeting in June. So now I'm going to ask Andrew Lennon to go over our financial slides.
So the next slide just summarizes our expenditures by spending category. Obviously, the largest part of our budget is related to salaries and benefits, and we detailed that in several of our meetings thus far. Our contractual obligations to our staff are reflected in those codes. Debt service decrease is offset by a capital transfer increase, as we talked about in the bond presentation, so as we shift in a one-year kind of lull of our borrowing, we're going to supplement that with capital transfer funds, and then we expect the new bond that was passed in November to pick up. We will see an offset in the following year. Many of the categories that were reflected on this slide are really a reflection on our programmatic needs highlighted by my colleagues to my left, as well as the cost of inflation that's been charging additional costs to us in supplies, materials, fuel, and et cetera. So the next slide is a summary of the way we're going to fund that budget. Year over year, our state aid numbers, our property taxes, excuse me, is the largest funding source that we have. It is tax cap compliant budget. We are maximizing the tax cap with a simple majority vote that will approve this budget. State aid is going up about 8%. New state aid numbers did come out overnight. I've reviewed some of those. There is no material impact to the projection that we have, and so there is really no benefit and no harm that I see in the budget projection from the governor that was passed by the legislature this week. Appropriated fund balance, we kept flat, and that is an area of concern, just to keep an eye on. We need to reduce that use going forward, but we're going to continue funding the budget with $3.5 million appropriated fund balance for the coming year. And then you see the other categories of sales tax, charges for services, use of money in property, and mislandes income bring up the balance of our funding sources for our budget in the coming year. Just a quick note on inflation, as since we've started showing this slide, we have seen inflation start to fall down. I think inflation was at 5.9% in February and just over 4% in March, so hopefully some of those trends continue, and although we've reflected those in our budget, hopefully we see some relief going forward as inflation kind of stabilizes and those price increases that we've reflected hold true for the coming school year. In terms of the tax rate analysis, so this Board is responsible for the budget and the resulting tax levy. However, we know that that impacts our homeowners in the form of a tax rate, so we take our tax levy of $119,574,460 and appropriate that out to our two towns by use of the assessed values and an equalization rate that's issued to us by the state. Basically, 90.7% of our tax levy will go to our town of Newcastle residents, and the town of Mount Pleasant residents will fund about 9.3% of the budget. When we take those apportionments and divide them by these assessed values, the tax rate for the town of Newcastle is projected to go up by about 2.08%, and the tax rate for the town of Mount Pleasant this year will be going down roughly about 4.5% versus the current year's tax rate. Those rates will not be finalized until summertime, when all the final numbers come in from the assessors, and when this Board hopefully adopts the tax warrant in the month of July as we finalize that step of the process. Should the budget fail, the Board has two options. It's to immediately go to a contingency budget or to put up a new budget for a second vote in June. If we were to go to a contingency budget either at that first go-round or if the budget failed the second time, we essentially would have to have a $0 tax levy change year over year. Because we are seeing an increase in our tax levy of about $2.5 million, that's essentially the reductions that would have to happen in our budget as proposed in order to stay compliant with law and regulations, so we need to see $2.497 million reduced. The next two slides are just summaries of the budget notice information that's shared, current year budget, the proposed budget that's going to the voters, and then what would be the contingency budget if we had to go down that path, as well as the breakout of the admin program and the capital expenditures for each of those three budget scenarios. And as noted here, certainly with over 70% of our budget related to personnel and benefits, right, any reduction of that nature would need to reflect reductions in personnel and benefits if we were to have to go down that path with a failed budget.
And so we feel like our budget, of course, is responsive to the Board's strategic question and maintains our operating standards. It supports our physical, social, emotional safety. It supports our, we have a robust professional learning approach here with our faculty and staff and administration. We feel like that is supported through this budget. We are adjusting our personnel based on enrollment, and we're doing that in part based on feedback we receive from our families, particularly at the elementary level. Our budget's below the tax cap to make sure that it's fiscally sustainable and it, we are adhering to our class contractual requirements within this budget. And just if you have questions about registration or how to receive an absentee ballot, just reach out to Lisa. You can call her, you can set up an appointment with her, you can contact her by email, and there are some certain criteria, so sometimes people just have questions about their standing as a voter, they want to know how to access absentee ballots, or they just want to understand more about the process, so please just reach out to Lisa, and all this information can be found online as well. And then you can also find additional information about the criteria to run for our Board of Education. We do have four members of our community running for two seats, and as Jane shared during her opening comments, there's an opportunity to learn more about our candidates next week at an event that's being held in the town that I know that the PTAs publicize as well on May 10. So let me just move to the last slide. So here we are in the process. We were at our last part in our budget calendar, so the next stage in our budget process would be our vote, which will be here at Horace Greeley High School on May 16 from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And so we encourage all of our residents to come out and exercise their ability to vote, and if you have any feedback about the budget you'd like to share with us, we certainly would welcome that, or if you have any comments or you have any questions, you can contact any of us by email, or you can certainly reach out to Andrew and I, and we'll be happy to have a conversation with you. Okay, and so now we're going to transition over to, before we take comments on our budget through the hearing process, we're going to actually transition over to the library, so I'd like to invite Bob Conrad to come up to the stage, who is our library director, who will be sharing with you the library's budget, and then after that, we will have, as a part of the hearing process, have a public comment strictly on the budgets, and then we'll close that process out and continue on with our meeting. So Bob, I'm going to-
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. All right, it's working. So let me begin by introducing myself. I'm Bob Conrad. For the last eight years, I was the school district-type public library director in Batavia, New York, and I'd like everyone to understand that during the eight years that I was a public library director in Western New York, we did have to break the tax cap one year. The tax cap allowance that year for us would have been a 1% increase, and we couldn't do it, but we kept our increases under 3% every year that I was a director, and two years in a row, we had no consecutive tax levy increases. That was a different community, a different time, but I have a pretty good record, and it's one that I'm proud of. So here is our budget summary. I hope you're able to read it. And I've highlighted the proposed tax levy increase, or really the proposed tax levy. The increase would equal about 3.3%, which is the maximum allowed under the current tax cap legislation. The remainder of our revenues would come from, they're based on recent six-month estimates, and the remainder of our expenditures are balanced against our fund reserve balance, which is routine. This is the tax cap calculation from the New York State website that went into determining the allowance. It's not that interesting, but based, our expenditures really begin with library personnel. In most libraries, you're going to find that personnel account for about 90% of expenses. Here, we have chosen, I better refer to my notes, to explain, we're not giving out a 4.6% increase to current library staff, but we identified a few staff vacancies that need to be filled. So we're budgeting for a 3% increase for most current staff. We actually eliminated some vacancies, including a full-time library assistant director, a part-time custodian position, and a benefits assistant, and we've identified the needs to be actually a secretary to the library director and either a part-time program assistant or video tech in our program room, and another full-time custodian. Of course, the remainder of the personnel costs that aren't really within our control. Healthcare goes up substantially in some years, and this year, the Medicare reimbursement went up substantially as well. So it comes as a surprise to many people that public libraries spend less than they imagine on library materials, and that's actually also pretty normal. This year, we've asked for no increase or really no change to our materials budget, and the reason why is that it was recently readjusted to reflect current needs, so the allocations are currently good, and my library department heads tell me that their expenditures are, well, they're meeting the needs of the community. Otherwise, we would ask for more. We had substantial increases, though, to our operations budget. I'm sure you won't be able to read that now that I see how the screen looks, but this is available for download on our website, and the projections for most of these expenses come, again, from the last six to 12 months of operations, and also, we've identified some known upcoming needs. So we're drawing your attention to, we're actually not budgeting to put any money towards the capital reserves this year because the operations and personnel needs were higher, but it is a goal of mine to bring us back around to where we can be putting money aside for capital needs. I'm going to skip now to the budget summary and my final remarks. So my final remarks are that it's important to understand that the proposed levy increase is really the only element of this budget that you, the public, get to have a say on, unless, of course, you run for library board and make it onto the library board, then you can actually have more to say about how we allocate the tax levy and other revenues. And if you're interested in that kind of thing, it's too late to file this year, but make sure you drop into the library and ask for me, and I'll tell you how fun and exciting it is to run and serve on your public library board. That's not sarcasm. I've got two great neighbors right here who also find the process as fun as I do. Thank you for your time and attention, and I think you'll be opening it up to questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. Bob?
Warren has a question.
Oh, hi, Warren.
Hi. So I guess the first question is on the capital reserve. You're not taking any capital reserve this year?
We did not earmark any expenditures on capital reserves, although we do have capital improvements planned for this year that will be coming out of our capital reserve budget.
And I've never seen, this is a $101,251 from your fund balance? Is that just to clean up the budget to make you get to match your expenses?
You've never seen the library's needs balanced against-
When we do fund balance, we usually put more fund balance in. If we don't use it, we put it back in the next year. We don't use fund balance to get to an exact number. So I guess it's $101,251 for a specific item, or is that just to balance the budget?
That's just to balance the budget this year.
Okay. And then, other questions? You showed an operations page and a revised page. Can you explain what you want to do with the facade of the library?
Yeah, the facade improvements will be coming out of the capital reserves, not part of this operating budget.
But can you explain what the goal is for this? I mean, we own the building, you guys use the building. I'd just like to understand what, maybe the community would like to understand what your plans are for that.
Yeah, there's such a large number of items that fall into the facade RFP that I'm not going to get them all, but a lot of it has to do with flashing around the perimeter, which is older wood that's, you know, falling down and in a state of disrepair. We would like to see the front patio and the, what's called the water feature of the library, created into more of an inviting sitting space. The beautiful courtyard that we have that we use for library programs is not at all ADA, accessible, or compliant. We have a range of public programs that we like to have in that space, including this summer, I think eight live music performances, so we'd like to bring that into a better condition for use, and I'm sure there's plenty more. That's a good start.
Okay, and one last question. On expenditures, you show that building maintenance and repair is remaining flat year over year?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Building maintenance and repair is remaining flat year over year?
Well, it's only a budget, and it's a projection based on recent six to 12 months, so no, I don't expect that it would be flat, but that the expenditures could be in line with what we've seen in last years, yeah.
So you're not budgeting for more maintenance and repair?
The improvement, the facade RFP would not be coming out of that line.
No, no, I'm talking about building maintenance and repair.
You are correct, Warren. I haven't budgeted an increase in that area because what we've spent on that has been sufficient for routine maintenance and repair.
I just think, you know, prices are going up, but, okay, it's your budget. Thank you.
Can I just ask, I know that you have professional fees, et cetera, involved in architectural services, et cetera, with the facade. Is there a projection when the work will take place and when it will be done? It's like, how far out is that projected?
I would say no, there isn't at this time. The budget, we began preparing it in November, immediately after I was appointed, without a good sense yet of when many of these things will take place. We do have our parking lot project scheduled for this spring or early summer, and the other elements, I would say that we're more at the exploratory phase at this point, and we're going to be, we're not even exploring yet with architects and designers. We're still at the competitive bid phase of those architects and designers.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Bob, if you could just wait up here, because I-
Maybe the community has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob?
I said maybe the community has a question.
Well, this is, so now I'm going to open up the hearing for public comment. It's not a Q and A, but if anyone has a comment on either the district budget or the library budget, you're certainly welcome to come up and make a comment at this time, but again, if you have questions, it's just, you're going to have to contact us offline, and we can certainly have a conversation with you about that. So if there's any comments specifically about the budget that we presented today, you're welcome to come up at this time, and we have a three-minute time limit, so. Okay, so I'm going to close the budget hearing. That's typical, because normally we get our comments and questions through the process, so we appreciate Bob for being here today. Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to follow through on our regulatory responsibilities. So now we're going to move into the Superintendent's Report. Okay, so I just want to do a brief- Okay, so I just want to do a brief safety and security update. I had met with parents, about a hundred and nine parents came out of, we have, we have about two thousand, three hundred households. Last week, we were able to accommodate every parent who wanted to participate in the safety and security Q and A. I'm not presenting tonight on anything that we discussed in those meetings. I think it's really important, we have a survey out and I, and I don't, I, I think it's important that that survey be administered without any kind of influence through presentations that I would be giving at this point since it's now been administered. And so I just want to provide an update that we did hold the meetings. We haven't issued the survey. We've had more parents respond this year at this point than we've had in our previous two administrations, which is great. So again, the community viewpoint will be anchored into this document. So it's very important that if you have a position or you want us to understand how you feel on the different options that we've been asked to consider, that you do that in the survey process. So now I just wanted to give an update on where we are with kindergarten enrollment. We had our registration. We are at ninety at Grafflin, seventy-four at Roaring Brook and seventy-six at West Orchard. We will keep watching this. As the board knows, there are two contingency positions in the budget for West Orchard and Roaring Brook. We're not at a point yet where we'd be adding a section, but we're going to keep monitoring it over the course of the summer. And should the community support the budget on the, at, at the vote on the sixteenth, then we'll be able to maintain those two positions moving forward. So I just want to update anywhere we are and I'll, I'll do another update in June. Um, I, this is quarter three, so I want to give you an update on where we are with our hate speech bias and discrimination incidents. So we had zero at the elementary school, we had three at the high school, we had sixteen at the middle school. This is directly after our hate speech lessons. Obviously, we are concerned about this. There wasn't a differential between Bell and Severn Bridges, but our administrative team did have to address sixteen incidents combined in both of those buildings. So we are, of course, we're concerned about this, we're talking about this with our DET and it, and our SCTs. And we're gonna, it just continues to, um, to punctuate that it's important that this work continues and that we continue to reevaluate our work as we move forward. Also, Kia from Insight will be joining the policy committee. The next time that we meet to talk about our, our policies that are guiding how we respond to, to these incidents based on what we're learning. But this is an ongoing conversation with us and of course, we remain concerned when there are any incidents that happen across our district. But we do have a, a significant number of quarter three incidents at the middle level that I wanted to share with you. Okay, so at this point, I had asked Adam if he could prepare some slides and some comments and on our, on our tenure process for the board, based on some feedback that you've been receiving. So I am going to turn it over to him at this point and he's going to share some information with you.
Thank you. So, so I wanted to start with just sharing some of our guiding principles when it comes to supporting our pre-tenure teachers. And typically, I don't read slides to you, but I think it's important in this case to really illustrate these guiding principles because they really guide all of the work that we do as we support teachers through this four years typically of pre-tenure process. In some cases, if a teacher has been granted tenure in that subject area previously in another district in the state of New York, then it's a three-year process as opposed to a four-year process. But just to, to give you a sense of our focus, the first one, teacher effectiveness matters. A skillful teacher is more positively impact student growth than those less skillful. Skillful teachers engage in research-based practices that positively and dramatically impact student learning. These research-based practices are known and must be explicitly taught and practiced so they, so that they are mastered over time. Skillful teachers build sophisticated mental models as they progress through developmental stages. Given the right support, all teachers can become skillful teachers. So our, our program, several of those bullets refer to research-based practices. The field of education, we have learned so much about teaching and learning really over the last ten to fifteen years. And I wanted to share with you our kind of anchor texts that we use for our research base with regard to teaching and learning. I, I brought a couple of them tonight that I just wanted to illustrate. One of them is by John Hattie, who many of you have heard of before. His, his work is around effect size and the things that teachers do in classrooms that have a positive effect on student learning. And just this one book is an analysis of two thousand, one hundred, two thousand, one hundred meta-studies where he looked at the effect size on different moves that classroom teachers make on learning. So this is, this is one of the books that we use as a, as a text to support our new teachers. There are others, The Skillful Teacher by John Safier, for example. And you see, I brought it as a prop because it's actually marked up with the years that we introduce our teachers to the different concepts in this book. So every tab has a, has a year on it and it's like first year, second year, third year, fourth year as we think about the continuum that we use to support teachers. So these are some of the, most of the books that we use as kind of our seminal works. And many of these people we've actually worked with in the district. The top right corner there is Robert Dillon, The Space Book. And he actually was in the district as we opened up L Building and the STEAM buildings and walked through our spaces, provided professional development for our teachers. I also wanted to share that this is a real team effort. I, I put this, made this graphic with probationary teachers in the middle. So you get a sense of the support structure, this kind of wraparound structure, the symbolism of our probationary teachers being surrounded by a support structure, many of which are faculty members, CCT members, department chairs, co-facilitators, grade-level leaders, mentors, PD team members are all members of our teacher bargaining unit. And then we also have our building administrators and our district administrators that all kind of wrap around to support the success of our pre-tenure teachers. And we, we've done some work with our faculty in collaboration to develop who's going to do what. And we've articulated these things. And although I won't read through this slide, this is an example of a slide that we created over the summer at our high school department chair retreat. Actually, Mr. Corsili was the principal at the time. And we worked with our department chairs and co-facilitators to articulate and our assistant principals to articulate what are the things that our department chairs and co-facilitators support with regard to our new teachers. And then we also developed kind of the support from other members. So like, for example, all of our new teachers, our first-year teachers get mentors. So what's the difference between the kind of support that a mentor might provide versus a department chair might provide or a grade-level leader might provide? So we actually have that all written out and articulated. So we're clear with regard to who is going to support and in what ways. So in terms of our, our four years of pre-tenure, in terms of a program, we actually have a program called Project Seven Twenty. And the name comes from seven hundred and twenty school days that are four years of a probationary teacher's appointment. And it's broken down into four years. The first, first year, we call Connect One Eighty. The second year is Thrive Three Sixty, Excel Five Forty, and then Lead Seven Twenty. So a first-year teacher would participate in Connect One Eighty, second year would be in Thrive, third year would be Excel, fourth year would be Lead Seven Twenty. We do have some tenured teachers. This is open to, to our tenured faculty. We do have some tenured, tenured teacher in the program as well, tenured teachers in the program as well. And our mentors are actually a pivotal part of that connect program. They engage in activities with our first-year teachers as part of that mentor program. But you get an idea of that continuum of support over the four years. And then on this next slide, I, I wanted to give you a sense. And again, I won't pause to read all of these pieces, but we've done a lot of work around watching teachers develop and studying teachers and how they do and being able to support this continuum of development from Connect where we talk about things like core instructional practices, lesson planning, time management, classroom management, material and space management that we work with, with our first-year teachers all the way up through the lead four years later, which is a much deeper dive into some of the sophisticated spirals of curriculum. For example, our hope is as teachers transition into their fourth year and eventually tenure, that they become our teacher leaders, they become department chairs and mentors. And, and so we built some capacity in that fourth year in that way. So you can see that, that purposeful continuum as we go. I also want to mention that these courses are taught by administrators and teachers working together. The teachers are our professional developers. So the first year is taught by Kate Naumann and Mary Devane, two of our teachers. Mary was a former high school teacher, Kate, a former elementary teacher, both masters of teaching. And they were pulled onto the professional development team, so they run that course. Kate Plate and I teach Thrive Three Sixty. Kate, for eighteen years, was a high school math teacher. She and I partner in Thrive Three Sixty. Justin Olive and I teach Excel Five Forty. And then Josh Colwell Block and Ellen Moskowitz teach the Lead Seven Twenty course. So we've, we've changed that over the years, but that's the current model. And so it's a nice partnership between our teacher leader, professional developers and our administration because we both bring different things to the table with regard to the kind of support and advice and, and things that we are good at with regard to these different years for our new teachers. So we survey our teachers that participate in this program each year. We, we don't do it really with the intent to share it publicly. That was never really the design of the survey, but I, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. We really survey our teachers that are participating so we can make the course stronger. And so you can see the results, you know, now that I have the opportunity to share them, I figured I would. This is the overall, my experience in this year's program has been. And you can see results from spring two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two. So that was the end of last year and also the winter of this year. We don't have spring this year just yet, but we'll have that data so we can kind of compare spring to spring. But you do see the, the feedback that we've gotten with regard to overall experience in these programs. We actually, there's a narrative portion as well. And so we've gotten some feedback that we've been able to make some adjustments. You can see that the, the program seems to be strengthening. On the left side, you see a question, the content of the course demonstrated instructional practices that are valuable in my classroom. On the right side, I felt that I had the opportunity to learn things that solved problems or issues that I was facing in the classroom. So we, we use these kind of things as a dipstick for, for our effectiveness and get feedback from our new teachers so we can make those adjustments. So then I wanted to transition. So that's the, the kind of new teacher four-year support program. This part, I wanted to talk a little bit about our evaluation system. The state of New York regulation and law is called APPR. It stands for Annual Professional Performance Review. And much of this is legislation that we don't have control over. In some cases, we have some local control and there were components that were negotiated several years ago with regard to this, but I did want to give you a sense because we, we understand the gravity of the decisions that we have to make with regard to personnel. And so I wanted to share with you some of the depth of those decisions and how those decisions are made. So just in terms of a snapshot, you can see all of our teachers are evaluated using a four-point scale. The H is highly effective, then effective, developing and ineffective. Fifty percent of their overall score is based on observations and an inquiry question that they develop. Fifty percent is based on student performance data. Of the fifty percent, that's observation and inquiry based. You can see on the right side how that breaks down. So there's two peer observations, two announced observations and one unannounced observation for all pre-tenure teachers every year. And then within that, you see the kind of the expanded portion where it says announced two. With each announced observation, you have a pre-observation conference, classroom observation, a written report and a post-observation conference. So each of these things is kind of expanded. On the next slide, and I know the text is very small, but I included this because I wanted to just kind of illustrate the point of how many touches we have with regard to opportunities for feedback and also opportunities for observation. And you can see a first-year teacher, second year, third year, fourth year. And I, I know the text is small, I apologize for that. But I did want to share how comprehensive the opportunities are for a teacher to be observed by administrators, observed by peers, get written feedback, have conversations in the pre-observation conference and the post-observation conference, have a written mid-year summary and have an end-of-year written summary as well as conversations. You can see the kind of comprehensive nature of the whole experience over the four years. I wanted to pull out, you know, kind of smush that screenshot over to the left side. So for a teacher over four years, a pre-tenure teacher, before we make that recommendation of tenure to the Board of Education, they've had eight peer visits with feedback along each one, eight announced observations, four of them by building administrators, four by district administrators. In many cases, it's different, I, I think in every case, it's different district administrators. So we'll rotate through who's doing them. That'll be the directors, myself, the assistant superintendents and superintendent. Twenty opportunities to get feedback from district and building leaders between all the announced and unannounced. And then twelve lessons with written feedback that are observed. And then I did want to share in terms of some statistics with regard to our, like our current situation with regard to what percentage of teachers are, are tenured, not tenured, et cetera. So you see that we have nineteen tenure candidates that we'll be recommending for this twenty-two, twenty-three school year, eight retirements. And then you can see a breakdown of probationary administrators and teachers currently in the system, tenured teachers and administrators, et cetera, there. Currently, we've got, I think it's eighty-four teachers in the four-year Project Seven Twenty course. And the reason that number is larger than our probationary teachers is because there's some teachers in there. Not all probationary teachers take all four years, but then there's also some tenure teachers that have chosen to take those courses as well. So that, yeah, that's an overall summary.
So I just wanted to get, are there any questions from the board? I know you're aware of our process, but I just wanted to, this is a lot of information. I just wanted to provide an opportunity, if you wanted Adam to provide any additional clarity. Go ahead, Ryan.
So because we receive a lot of questions about this process, I wanted to give the district team a chance to tell the public if parents want to submit commentary about their experience with a teacher, what do you all recommend is the best way to do that? And is there certain times of year that make a difference, et cetera?
Yeah, I, I think it's always helpful for the principals to receive feedback on our faculty. And so I know that often when we, there are concerns that are raised, that's the feedback that we receive. But it would be also helpful to have positivity, positive commentary as well because we always like to share that with our staff. And so I, I, I think that that's the best place to provide feedback that parents feel like we need to understand about the experiences that their kids are having in our, in our classrooms.
I have a question. So you mentioned with the APPR that it's fifty percent observation and then fifty percent based on student performance. I think it would be helpful to have a little more of an understanding about how student performance, what student performance data is being used, how that's being used, you know, and obviously teachers teaching in different disciplines, there's going to be, you know, very different evaluative criterion in terms of student progress and what that looks like additionally on different grade levels. So I'm sort of curious what that, what that data is and how that data is used and evaluated.
I'm answering, yeah. So, so that's a great question. The student performance data, I didn't go deeply into it here because I was talking more about kind of new teacher support. But the student performance data that's used for us is the student performance on the New York State English Regents exam and the student performance on the algebra exam. With the idea being that all teachers are teachers of literacy, all teachers are teachers of mathematics. They all contribute to those scores over time, over the years. And so we use those and we use district, district averages with regard to how students score in different scoring bands and then assign points based on the scoring. All districts' APPR plans are approved by the state and then uploaded onto the state website. So if anybody's interested in seeing what that plan looks like in its entirety, they can see the actual grade bands with regard to how our students perform and, you know, how that breaks down into teacher evaluation points.
Anyone else?
Okay.
I think it's, you know, I just want to comment that thank you for doing this presentation. I know there's, there's so much as a parent that must seem mysterious in terms of the work of the board and the district and, and where those jobs fall. And, and just, I know we have gotten some letters and we really try and be responsive because we know that there's just, you know, information that's maybe isn't readily available or something people haven't asked before and something comes up. So I appreciate you going through that. And, and just as, as I said in the president's report, what, what our role, you know, as board members is we, we provide oversight. We basically make sure that they're following all these procedures with the teacher, that there's a whole, with the teachers, there's a process, there's a good evaluative, evaluative process. And all of these decisions are discussed with us, you know, year to year. We don't make the decisions, but we get the reports. So we look over to make sure that everything is, is done, which it always done, is done extremely comprehensively and thoroughly. So I think it's really nice to, to give the community an opportunity to see all the hard work that is put into this. So I appreciate it. It may, it may answer some questions. And if it doesn't, like you said, ask the building principal, ask us, we will direct you to the right person. But, you know, I think this was really informative and I appreciate you taking the time to do this and present it to the community.
I also want to acknowledge that it's, it, some, sometimes we get feedback and we, people ask questions and it's just outside of the realm of things that we can share.
Right.
And so, you know, when we're talking about or getting feedback and people are asking us to interact around decisions, you know, there are confidentiality restrictions that we have to follow and that we, um, and privacy considerations. And so while I appreciate all the feedback that I receive, um, that's, it's really one way. It's one-way feedback. There's not interactions around the information that is being presented because it's, it's just not appropriate. But I know that doesn't feel good. And so I just want to acknowledge that and, 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 and just express my understanding about frustration when, when you're on the other end of that and you're, and you're looking to engage with us around, um, our staff. So I, I want to share that as well. I'm sorry, would like to transition now. We have a number of grants on the agenda. So Adam's going to present our, our CSF grants and then our, uh, what a conceptual idea that we're moving forward with and that's in the design process. So thank you. Thank you, Adam, for that presentation.
Great, thank you. So, so you'll see on your agenda, Agenda Item five point three, actually, the, the next several slides are grants from the CSF. And I probably be remiss if I didn't mention the CSF Gala. Thank you on behalf of the CSF to all those who Thank you on behalf of the CSF to all those who attended the the weather wasn't great in that it was a little rainy, but we had a lot of fun. And so it was a for a good cause. So we appreciate that. And the proceeds are then, you know, kind of channeled back through grants and Instagrams. So I wanted to share several of those with you this evening. The first one is written by Roaring Brook teacher Erica Miranda, who wrote an Instagram grant, one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and change for some multicultural classroom materials. You can see some examples up there, different kinds of construction paper, materials, paint colors, as well as colors of the world markers and crayons. So I think it's just fantastic that this stuff is available and that we're filling up our classrooms with this. So kids have an opportunity to use it in their classrooms. So that's 5.3 on your agenda. You'll see 5.4, the there's a project here at the high school through Catherine Adamanelli and Amanda McDonough that have been working with a group of students on the intersection of fashion and sustainability. And I'll be honest, as as I've learned more about the impact of fashion on the environment and how much fashion actually goes to waste, the students are working hard with these teachers to repackage and reuse and redesign clothing. And so they've written an Instagram for some materials, especially a sewing, like a high-end sewing machine that'll be used to, they've been like taking apart garments and re, you know, putting them back together. They'd normally be discarded and they're turning them into some really neat fashionable items. So that's an Instagram. You'll see that as 5.4 on your agenda. So I think it's really like a neat intersection of of the arts and steam and sustainability. But they need some supplies in order to do that. So we thank the CSF for that and and also creative teachers and students for their work there. And then I've got several slides on this last one that I wanted to speak on on your agenda. And and I know I won't do this justice. The students have presented this a couple of times and they're a really hard act to follow. And I wish they were here to be able to present it themselves. But the Innovation Committee has been working on a proposal that they're calling the World Economics Learning Lab. And we had a group of students that are part of that committee. I know Ryan's also been part of that committee and has worked hard as part of that. The students actually presented it to the CSF Board and we're thrilled to hear that the CSF Board is going to support this project. So I wanted to share a little bit more about it. And we're calling it the Well. The students came up with that name, the World Economics Learning Lab. It's a new space proposal at Greeley, Applied Learning Center for the Humanities is kind of our subtitle. I mean, you can see the vision here to create a space for relevant, authentic interconnected learning experiences in a data-rich environment where they're focusing on solving global problems. And they're thinking about using the UN Sustainability Goals in order to ground that work. So this is a picture of the students that who presented this. It's them practicing on the right side in L Building and them actually doing the presentation there on the left side to the CSF Board. Ultimately, they got a favorable response from the CSF Board. So we wanted to give you a few images that we were using for inspiration, just so you can get a sense of what this might look like. The idea here is you can think of this almost as a, like a trading room, but it's really much more than that. It's designed to be able to take in lots of data and serve as kind of a mission control. And students could be studying anything from world events to economics to something in science. For example, maybe like seismic activity around the world for around the globe. So it's really just a space that's designed to be a data-rich environment. You see the stock tickers around the top, lots of high-powered PCs around the room and the ability to bring in a lot of information into that space. And in terms of the proposed location, we're thinking about the classrooms. We have three traditional classrooms that sit between the academic commons. And then as you walk towards L Building on the left side, right now, we have three kind of traditional spaces that are, in my opinion, in need of of renovation. And by turning that into the World Economics Learning Lab, it has a nice connection with the humanities, which are mostly in L Building. You have English and Social Studies and Business classes up in in L over there. So we have a nice connection there. And then we also have the I-Lab is there in blue. And the hope is that we're converting that into that Unity Center. So we'll be able to have kind of a nice loop over there on that side of the campus of of modern spaces to support some of the interdisciplinary work in curriculum. That building right now is called Dell. It kind of sits in between like D and L. So it's it's called Dell Building. All right. So so right now, the architect, as we've done research and we've visited places, we've visited some colleges and some high schools that have similar spaces, that all roads seem to lead back to the same architect, who seems to be the premier designer with regard to instructional spaces that are designed like this. So Gerd, he's he's been very generous with his time so far. He's given us a proposal with regard to how much this will cost and we use that to 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 ask the CSF for this grant. So these are some of his spaces that he's actually designed for for high schools, private schools, and also colleges and universities. So we do have just a kind of a budget slide with regard to what their proposal actually is. So this is, this is not money to build the space. It's really the money for the design architect. And the idea would be that as part of that design, we would then have what we would need to potentially do the fundraising that would be required to be able to build the space. It would come with the architectural design, the drawings, the furniture schematics, the the kind of layout with regard to the architectural drawings, but also some drawings that we could use for the actual fundraising process. So this proposal by the CSF, supported by the CSF Board, would get us in the in the game with regard to the design architect work that we would need to have done.
We have a number of policies on the agenda tonight, so we just want to highlight them. And I'd like to begin with Andrew Criscilia, who is co-chair of the Wellness Committee. So Andrew.
Sure, thanks. Our Wellness Committee this year took on the role of reviewing our wellness policy, which traditionally includes sections on physical activity, nutritional education, and then food services, and noted the absence of mental health and mental wellness within the policy. Some of our students from the Mental Wellness Club at Greeley, who joined us, really pointed that out for us. And we took a look at surrounding districts and their wellness policies. They all followed suit with our original wellness policy, including the traditional sections of physical activity and nutritional education and food services. And we thought it important to revise the policy to include mental health, both recognizing the importance of mental wellness and the interconnectedness between all of those for overall wellness. This puts it on then squarely in the purview of the Wellness Committee that then in future could ask for more information on how mental health is integrated into our health curriculum as per New York State Regulation from two thousand and eighteen. And the language from this is really pulled from NICE Ed's model sample mental health policy. And so we submit that for your review.
Right. So now we have three financial policies that we're recommending adjustments based on recent audits. So Andrew will go through those briefly and then we'll come back to them later on in the agenda.
So the first policy change is thirty-twelve, which is conflicts of interest. The auditors, the internal auditors of the district recommended that we have a reporting mechanism for any conflict of interest for either board members or staff members who might have a conflict of interest with an outside party that's doing business with the school district. So rather than reinvent the wheel, we, there's language included in general municipal law. And this language that we're proposing in the policy matches the language in general municipal law. It just is a formalization of what disclosure should be happening by our staff or board members if they if they have a conflict. The next policy recommendation is sixty-forty pertaining to the extra classroom activities account funds, which are basically the student clubs at our secondary school buildings. Our internal auditors noted that our policy currently recommends or has language that the district treasurer is also the de facto extra classroom activities fund treasurer. And while that's working fine for us right now, there may be a time where the board might choose to to appoint another person as the central treasurer for the extra classroom activities funds. So a slight tweak in the language here just separates those, that sentence into two pieces so that the board may choose to appoint a treasurer other than the district treasurer to to manage those funds. And then the third policy revision is related to our controllers audit and regarding the inventory and capitalization policy. The first modification is the threshold by which we will be required in the proposed policy change to tag physical assets. In, I believe it's two thousand and three, when the policy was first adopted, the number was set as five hundred dollars per unit. Certainly inflation has risen that number quite amount, quite a large amount. So we think it's appropriate for us to to update that number as well, so that we would update that to a thousand dollars per unit. We also are adding a field that is required to be tracked called the asset identification number, or essentially the asset tag number that we are assigning as a district asset. And then there is a section here where we're adding really three components. What, how we will review our asset inventories. So first being unannounced building checks by the the business office, making sure that we know the physical location of our assets and identify anything that is missing a tag that should have it. A random selection of assets that are found there, making sure that that those assets have tags. And then also tracing our fixed asset purchases to confirm that our records match what they, what we purchased in a given year. And these recommendations are basically going to be managed by my, by the business office and and is a direct result of the recommendations that came from the controllers audit.
All these policies are on for first reading tonight. And so just next week is a big week for us. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, it's Nurse Appreciation Week, it's Bus Driver Appreciation Week. We're actually appreciating the bus drivers on the nineteenth. So I just want to acknowledge that we'll be, there'll be a lot of things happening in our district next week to show our appreciation for the people who work here to support our kids and and make this the the best environment that we can have here for our students. We acknowledged our principals on Monday. It was of this week. It was Principals Appreciation Week. So it's the time to say thank you to everyone. So I just want to express my gratitude tonight as well. And then we have upcoming events. We have Parent Orientation for Kindergarteners coming up. We have a Relay for Life this Saturday. We have Middle School One-O-One next week. We have a, we're starting our concert season. We had the band concert. Now we're we're moving into orchestra. We have our Career Day next week. Annie's going to be presented by West Orchard. And then we have our budget vote and a concert the following week. And then we have another board meeting. So I just wanted to highlight those important events and that is the end of the superintendent's report. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us up to committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
The only thing I was going to say what Adam said, that CSF had their annual fundraiser and it was great. Unfortunately, I was unable to make it. I was on West Coast.
Yes.
But thank you to the community for supporting CSF, which supports our schools and children.
I know, I know. Some of us, I I also was unable to be there, but I know a number of other people up there, up here were. I know the weather was a little challenging, but it's always an amazing event and and what they do for our schools is is immeasurable. So a big, a big dose of gratitude. So thank you very much. Any committee, anything facilities, wellness? Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, so we had a CARES meeting where we had some great engagement from folks that were able to appear looking at the teacher survey information that we have around the DEI work that we've been doing. So we walked through that data, broke up people into small groups and and had a lengthy discussion about what's there and what's next for us. I thought it was very productive. People were very open about their thinking about where we're at with that work and wanting to see it keep going.
Okay, thank you.
And based on Ryan's suggestion, we actually put that on the DEI website, the aggregate district data.
Yeah.
Great. We had a policy meeting, but all of the policies have previously been discussed in the superintendent's report and they're all on just for first readings tonight. So.
And maybe I could share that in the future, the policy committee is going to have to tackle two things. We're looking at transportation, at extracurricular events. And we're also, based on a recent audit, we need to look at our attendance policies and extracurricular activities. So that's on the horizon of of things that we'll be discussing in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't think there's anything else to report. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to our public comment period. I know a lot of people are familiar, but we do have some new people here tonight. So we do welcome public comments. In respect for everyone's time, we ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. Please know if we cut you off abruptly because we will enforce the three-minute rule, it does not mean that, you know, you can't hand off your comment to us, call us, be in touch with us. We do want to hear what you want to say, but for purposes of meeting and giving everyone the same amount of time, we will, we will stick to that. Be mindful that, you know, we we can, after all the comments are done, discuss, choose to discuss or not to anything that is brought up during the meeting. And again, we apologize. We know some people get confused. It's not a question and answer. It is just a comment period, but we welcome you to come up and give your comments. So just state your name and come up to the microphone if you wish to share anything with us this evening.
No comments.
Oops, someone's coming up here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ali Shemtob, speaking tonight in my capacity as a mother and CCSD parent. I wanted to take a moment and thank our Board of Ed and administration for encouraging our community to have the very nuanced conversation regarding school safety. Our community, our children, and our teachers benefit when we respectfully come together to consider all sides of an issue and discuss concerns as well as benefits. This particular topic is worthy of our time and attention. There are clearly many opinions on this topic, and while I understand adding law enforcement to the equation can be very scary, I do think it is important to have this conversation without ideology or politics getting in the way of good judgment and common sense. Much of the data against SROs is outdated. There have been over three hundred mass shootings since two thousand and eighteen. They're biased in favor of a particular outcome and fail to account for mass casualty events that were thwarted because of the presence of law enforcement, most notably in Nashville, but there are others. We seem to be comfortable calling law enforcement after a bad act has started. We should also be okay with an officer being present in the hopes of preventing the worst from ever happening. We value the contributions of SRO Officer Michelle at Harris Greeley, but seem to be unwilling to clear up misunderstandings our community has about her role and responsibilities. The survey that the district sent out defined an SRO as someone who has the ability to make an arrest. But we know that Officer Michelle has not and will not arrest students at our high school. We are not an urban school district. Our issues with adding a police presence in schools may not be the same concerns that an inner-city district might have. We have a well-trained and diverse police force, ready, willing, and able to help keep our children and staff safe. I feel very strongly that now is the time to expand SROs in all of our schools. And over six hundred parents in the community signed a petition agreeing with me. None of us want more guns in our schools. None of us want our schools to become fortresses. And as much as I want to solve the mental health crisis in this country and enact stricter gun laws, these are not the problems our Board of Ed is being asked to solve. We are simply asking you do everything in your power to prevent the worst from ever happening here. But if you don't agree with me, that's okay. This doesn't make us enemies. It is incumbent upon us to be leaders and set an example of the type of world we want for our children. Being inclusive also means being inclusive of new or different ideas, and it means being willing to have difficult conversations while acknowledging there are more than two sides to an issue. Let us continue to have a reasoned conversation that allows us to consider the shades of gray. Thank you so much for your time and for your efforts going forward. It is appreciated.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diane Pufell, and I'm here to talk about a different topic, although that was a hard one to follow. I am here to just talk about something that pertains to the teachers that will be returning next year. And with it being Teacher Appreciation next week, I really wanted to take a moment to thank a teacher who has been very impactful to my son, who will not be, who is not asked to come back next year. And although I know it is a very sticky topic, I do want to take a moment to thank this teacher as he will not be here to provide this wonderful education for all the future children at Bell Middle School. I wanted to start off by thanking Sean Hollerin. Sean is a teacher who works with children in the Special Education Department. Sean goes above and beyond to support children who do not get all this positive reinforcement and support in all of their educational classes. Although we would think, well, teachers provide this to the children, the reality is that is not the case. Sean breaks down lessons for children, creates daily videos that he posts for teachers and parents so that we can help our students who are struggling most. As we know, all eighth-grade students were required to take Advanced Algebra, a high school course this year. For my son, this was a very big struggle, and for many others, it was as well. Sean took an unobtainable class and made it a very positive experience for my son, who is here and would like to speak tonight as well. I think we need more teachers like Sean. Sean takes the time to not only make daily videos, to meet with students. He talks to parents. He calls me twice a week to recap everything that he does with my child. We come up with positive strategies, ways to accommodate my son in a class that he should not be in, and how to make this a better experience for him. I'm very upset to see that other children will not get to see and work with a teacher as dedicated as Sean. I think more people in the district I think more people in the district should have been provided the opportunity to have a teacher like Sean Halloran on their side. Thank you.
So I have been asked to speak in favor of SROs. I am by trade and profession a law enforcement officer. My name is Morgan Dolan.
Do you mind providing your name? I'm sorry.
My name is Morgan Dolan. My child goes to West Orchard.
Thank you.
And I am in my career, a law enforcement officer. I specialize in the prosecution of homicide defendants for committing acts of shootings. And I want to address specifically the spread and sprawl of our school district. We look at studies, and the FBI is the leading publisher of these studies, and NYPD or other police responses to active shooting situations, they are effective when they can arrive in three minutes. Seven Bridges is 11 minutes to the police department. West Orchard is nine minutes. You have Roaring Brook five minutes away. Grafflin is four. The only police department and school that is in one minute is Bell. And we look at the shooting statistics and the targeted attacks on schools, the increased rate of shootings is occurring, not at the high school rate, but rather at the middle school and elementary. So we are seeing a disproportionate number of shootings of our innocent children under 14 years of age. And we are a school district that does not have the capacity, based upon our geographical sprawl, to address this unless we have in place SROs or law enforcement officers. And when we look on the type of shootings that are occurring, the weapon of choice is the AR-15. An AR-15 has a capacity of shooting 30 rounds just off of one magazine. There is a higher capacity of 100 rounds, but if we look at the trends of the shootings of Uvalde and even at Sandy Hook, in Uvalde alone, that shooter discharged a total set of rounds, and I have to look at my numbers, of 315 rounds of ammunition before police were able to stop that shooting. In Sandy Hook, the shooter discharged 154 rounds in less than four minutes. Police were not able to stop that until those four minutes had gone past. When we talk about SORs, SROs or law enforcement officers in the school, it is solely that, as you said, it's one mechanism of deterrence. But the fact of having... I think very much.
Okay, thank you. You know what? You can, if you have a statement, you can give it to Lisa so we can finish reading it.
I will, I'll provide it to you by you know.
Thank you.
Are we starting?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Rousseau. I have two children in Grafflin, and this is my first Board of Education meeting ever, so that says a lot. Thank you for, for having me. I have been on Wall Street now for the past 20 years, and I've always learned to trust my gut, but verify that and ground that with facts and data. And here to present a number of facts to you around SROs in general. Guns are not going away, let's protect our children. Case in point, a proven way to deter bad actors and protect our children is through school resource officers. What is an SRO? Here is the definition. The NASRO, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers, defines an SRO as: One, carefully selected. Two, specifically trained. Three, properly equipped law enforcement officer. Important also to note, members of our community, we believe they'll be a part of. They're going to foster positive relationships to our children and the relationships that our children will develop with the police. Example, Officer Michelle in Greeley. They serve as mentors, they work hand in hand with school, community, and police. Also important to note, Newcastle has seven New York State police officers certified already as SROs. They go through a rigorous five-day, 38-hour course, a written exam, and a practical exam. The core topics include 15, of which are too many, I will not name because I only have two minutes or one minute left, top things that I wanted to highlight. They go through SRO roles and responsibilities, counseling and interview techniques, school violence, dealing with special education students, dysfunctional families, substance abuse, ethics and professionalism. Last but certainly not least, they go through continuing education yearly through New York State. So to reiterate all of this, SROs promote a positive relationship with our community and children, rigorous training, and have yearly continued education. I don't know about everyone else's gut here, but my gut and the facts and data-driven person that I am are telling me this is an absolute no-brainer. Thank you for your time.
My name is Delilah, if you're ready, and I wanted to tell you what a good teacher Mr. Halloran has been for me and all my classmates this year. Mr. Halloran is one of the most supportive teachers I have ever had in all my years at Grafflin and Bell. He's extremely patient and always tries his best to answer all his students' questions. If I'm struggling to understand a concept, he never gets frustrated and always finds a way to help me understand. I know that if I'm ever confused about classwork or homework question, he will take the time to make sure I feel confident about it. Mr. Halloran also has a great sense of humor, which I believe is a very important quality in a teacher. He tries to use it as often as he can, and I really enjoy that he does that. It makes learning much more fun. Speaking of confidence, I never thought that I would ever run track, but Mr. Halloran took the time to get to know me this year and thought I would like being on the track team at Bell. The only reason I tried it was because Mr. Halloran was so convincing and said it would be fun. I'm now thinking of joining, of joining the track team at Greeley, and the only reason I'm considering is because of Mr. Halloran's encouragement. Math is definitely not my favorite subject, but Mr. Halloran found a way to help me feel more confident in my abilities. I can't understand why he would leave Bell because he seemed to like his job so much. I hope you can find a way for him to stay because students in Chapua need a student like, needed a teacher like Mr. Halloran.
Since, since Delilah didn't use all of her three minutes, I hope I could have an extra couple of seconds because I might go over. But I'm Alicia.
I'm sorry, we just, we have to apply the same limits to everyone, so go ahead.
Okay. My name's Alicia Sands, and I wanted to express my disappointment and confusion that the Board of Ed would decide to accept Sean Halloran and Allison Mitchell's resignations. But I really wanted to discuss the resignations in general, at why our district has so many resignations in the recent past. Is there an explanation for these high numbers? Is, is it an issue worth exploring? In talking with some teacher friends in other districts, I found that our resignation numbers are much higher than other districts. One person told me that most districts have one to three resignations in a given year and five in a bad year, and I'm, I've told we're closer to 17 annually, and I'm wondering what the problem is and how we can find a solution as a community. Recently, our district took a survey regarding our students' sense of belonging. One result showed that a mere 30% of kids in our district feel connected or close to an adult in their school. Is that how we want our kids to feel, or do we want our students to feel that teachers are a resource, a support, someone who cares? How do we build student-teacher relationships with the kind of turnover that CCSD is experiencing? Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Halloran are teachers that kids relate to, and now they aren't coming back. Additionally, with turnover so high, I'm not sure how this district will attract quality teachers. Why would strong teachers want to come here and teach when they're able to see this high turnover? Mr. Halloran is an exceptional teacher, a motivating coach, and a kind human being. He has been an excellent teacher adored by his students. Ask any of them, several of them are here tonight. And students and parents probably wrote you letters about how they valued him as an educator. He has good relationships with them all, even ones he's had to discipline sometimes. Mr. Halloran taught my daughter challenging math curriculum effectively, and he also gave her a lot of confidence and a sense of independence which is unique in all of her years in Chapua. He has engendered in our daughter a willingness to try things in and out of the classroom that she might have given up on before. Mr. Halloran is the kind of teacher who is very invested in viewing students as people. He connected with her, got to know her, what motivates her and what intimidates her. She accepts his suggestions, and he approaches and had as a major positive impact on her attitude towards math and, more importantly, her abilities in general. He convinced her to join the track team, something she is never interested in before. He attends the Bell plays, something only a handful of teachers do. This is the kind of teacher and coach we don't want in Chapua. Some other school district will snap him up, and it's our students' loss. Well, I don't have a student taught by Ms. Mitchell this year, she's an excellent educator as well, who's taught my children in the past. I don't know why someone of this district, why we would let someone of this caliber go. She has passion, the kids enjoy learning from her, and she taught them well. She's beloved. It concerns me to think that our teachers might not feel happy in their jobs. They deserve our utmost respect and appreciation. In my experience, when you aren't happy in your job, it is hard to be motivated and engaged. We want our kids to be taught by effective teachers, so please, you should be looking to these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, our names are Justin, Aaron, and Gavin. Currently, we are eighth grade students at Bell. We all have IPs and work with Sean Halloran for math and science class. Mr. Halloran has guided us throughout this year and has never given up on us. He's super passionate and always finds a way to make our day.
For us, math is a constant struggle. We are so lucky to have Mr. H. go out of his way to modify and reteach the daily math lessons. If I forget to hand in something, Mr. H. will find us in another class and make sure I have the work, or if I need the homework. He always offers to stay after school, help me complete the work. I've never had a teacher to care so much. He's so dedicated to his students.
Mr. H. calls our moms a couple of times and a couple of times a week and always shares what we worked on in his class. We brainstorm ways to support our learning and it makes us, makes us feel great to know that he cares. I wish all of the teachers in Chapua were like Mr. Halloran.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Sergio, and I'm going to keep it very brief and very simple. I just want to talk, touch briefly on the, on the SRO approach. I understand that some of the concerns that have been brought up have been about SROs and race, and just, again, very few points that I want to bring up. Hopefully, I don't say anything that anybody has already heard, probably one of these things. But I've been a person of color for about 37 years, and 27 of them in the United States, and 22 of those in New York City, and the last five have been here in Newcastle. Some very interesting last five years, for sure. I'm sure everybody on the dais has had, has had some sort of experience with people of color and different races and different ethnic backgrounds. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys realize that in making these decisions, don't just come up with these ideas on your own, but use your resources and speak to your friends and speak to other parents and other constituents, so to speak, of the neighborhood, which I was glad to see finally in the last survey, that the, it was asked if you want to put your race and your gender. So I think that that's better than just guessing. This is what I think that the community of color wants from, from the SROs. The second part, I just want to give major accolades to Dr. Ackerman. You have done a phenomenal job. Your tenure as a superintendent has been tough by, I mean, so many different things have happened in the time that you've been around. But I, I do want to caution you to one thing, you know, if and when an active shooter or a terrorist attack happens in this community, take it from somebody with, with similar experience, you know, I've had to walk over puddles of blood and dead bodies both at Bronx Lebanon and in the West Side Highway attacks in 2017. The worst feeling is, besides the empathy that you feel towards the people that are hurt and injured, is I could have done something about this, and I didn't. I could have put, we could have put barriers in a certain place. We could have had police officers in, in a closer by or instituted something that could have helped prevent, or at the very least, prevent the casualty from being worse. So just those two, two points that I wanted everyone here to consider. That's it, I didn't even use my whole time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Adam Dolan. My wife, Morgan, spoke earlier. I'm also a lawyer by trade, although not quite as accomplished as her, in her career. I do want to speak in support of the use of SROs. As you all probably know, since 1999, there have been 380 school shootings. 352,000-plus students have been affected by school shootings. And part of the reason that I'm in favor of use of SROs is that the school shootings seem to be increasing, there's no overall, you know, unified profile of these shooters. They are every gender, every race, different ages, and if people think that these school shootings can't occur here, I think it's just naive and a bit reckless. In 2021, we've already had 21 school shootings. There was one last week in, in Virginia. And the use of SROs here as part of a multidisciplinary approach, where they can engage the students and work with the administrators to identify threats, I think is paramount. The Secret Service and the National Threat Assessment Center has come out with multiple studies between 2018 and 2021. In their 2021 study, they cited to 67 thwarted school attacks. In one-third of those thwarted attacks, the SROs played a prominent role in either identifying the plot or responding to the plot and helping to stop it. And I think what we'd all like to see here is that multidisciplinary approach, where we not only are instituting, you know, door locks and, and cameras and quick response times to, you know, the law enforcement that we would normally think of, but that we have an SRO perhaps on campus that can respond quickly to these schools that are perhaps farther away. At the end of the day, my child is still at West Orchard, and if you've ever been there and, or you haven't had a child there, if you, if you pull in, there are multiple points of entry, and the kindergarten class is right there on the left, and it's all windows. So it doesn't take, you know, a genius to figure out what an AR-15 could do. It doesn't matter if we lock the doors, if they can shoot through the windows. So hopefully, an SRO would act as a deterrent. I appreciate your time, all. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Janessa Wilson. I have two children in the district, one at West Orchard and one at Seven Bridges. I would like to speak about the SRO officers. I am a teacher in a close district that, I've been teaching for 18 years. All of my years teaching, we have had an SRO officer in the building. They have been an integral part of the school community. They have made me feel better as a teacher, and I think they would be a wonderful addition to the security protocol here. I will say not just having them for, hopefully, never having to deal with a shooting in the school, but also for other things that happen, other emergencies. They are trained to be there. I had a student who fainted in my classroom. The first person in that room was the SRO officer, dealing with getting them to an ambulance and getting them the help that they needed. I think that it would be a wonderful addition. I think that it would help everyone to feel a little bit better about what we are doing. in our schools. And I think it is a wonderful way for children to also see and have a community member who is a police officer that they will know and they can learn from as well. That's all.
How you doing? I'm Eric Solera. I'm from the Bronx. I talk fast. My thing is longer than three minutes, but I'm going to try and speed through this. If I talk too fast, I'll email it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it. So I have a parent of two children in third grade and kindergarten. My wife grew up in Bethel, Connecticut. That's the town that borders Sandy Hook. She has friends who were teachers at Sandy Hook during the shooting. One of her best friends lives in Sandy Hook and has three kids in the school system there. Our sister-in-law is from there. And after retiring as an elementary school principal, my father-in-law taught math in Sandy Hook from 2015 to 2019. We have a lot of ties to that community and have seen directly the impact of the shooting 11 years ago, which is why I chose to speak today. For the record, those schools and the surrounding Connecticut towns, including Bethel, all have SROs. Sandy Hook has two in every school. And Bethel even moved their police station onto the campus that houses all of the town's schools and a bid for both deterrence and to foster positive relations with the children and parents of the community. I have a lot of questions of what happens if the board votes against implementing SROs. I know you can't answer them today and that's okay. So I picture that it's Tuesday in early October after the vote against SROs. It's perfect fall weather. It's crisp air, clear skies. It's 10:15. I'm sitting at my desk and I receive a parent square alert that there's an active shooter at Chapakua Elementary School. I often wonder how I'd react in that situation, how I'd react if one of the children was a victim, if one of my children was a victim. But I also wonder what you're going to do when you get that call. Will you rush to the school to see what's happened or will you stay at home or at your office? Will you breathe easy that it wasn't your own child's school? Will you be part of the team that works to identify the dead students and faculty? The team that views the mangled bodies torn apart by bullets from an AR-15? Will you notify the parents of deceased? What will you tell them? Will you look them in the eyes? Will you visit the wounded in the hospital? Will you attend all or any of the funeral services? How will you feel attending when it's a child or one of your friends? Will you be part of the town vigils? Are you prepared for what people will say about you, the blame you'll take? Will you then approve SROs after the fact? What will you do four months later after my child is buried when you walk past me in the CVS on King Street? Will you look me in the face? Will you acknowledge me if we're both browsing for bopkas at Susan Lawrence? Will you think about the children who are toddlers now but will eventually go through the CCSD school system and the trauma and anxiety they'll face in the future attending our schools, the way our friends' kids in Sandy Hook feel now, the extended aftermath of a tragic shooting? My wife's best friend's daughter is 12 and attends middle school in Sandy Hook. She has severe anxiety related to attending schools because of the decade-plus of frank discussions her schools and families need to have in the ensuing years. There's no sugarcoating lockdown scenarios and safety drills in Sandy Hook. But she said, quote, "One of the things that calms me is knowing we have resource officers. They've been like awesome, so friendly, funny, and like they really know us. Plus, I know they're there if something happens again." If we vote against SROs and something does happen, this won't be an event that we move on from. What's the first thing that comes to mind when you hear Sandy Hook, Uvalde, or Parkland? This will be a pock in our town, an asterk that always follows it. The first thing that comes to mind when people hear its name. And just like our town, this will be an asterk in all your legacies. The thing that comes up when you apply to a position in a new district or seek to elevate your career elsewhere, all good. Are you okay with that legacy?
Thank you.
Hi. How are you? My name's Jamie Oberfest. Thank you so much for having us. I've never been to a board meeting and I think it's really awesome and impressive. I have two students in the district. One is actually, my fifth grader is at Winward. We hope to bring him back to Bell as soon as we can. And I have a third grader at Roaring Brook. I'm an avid newsreader. It's almost a daily occurrence, obviously, where we hear news of the latest gun shooting. Today was in an Atlanta medical facility. And so far, there's one person dead and four in the hospital. It feels like shootings are getting worse and it's because they are. Some of this, I'm going to be a little messy because I don't want to repeat facts that other people said, but since Columbine in 1999, more than 338,000 students in the U.S. have experienced gun violence in school. There were more school shootings in 2022, '46, than any year since Columbine. So far, the numbers aren't looking good for 2023. This mirrored America's broader rise in gun violence as it emerged from the pandemic. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security research shows that if we know the signs of gun violence, we could prevent it and reverse the trend. I'm here today to speak in support of school resource officers at the middle school and the elementary schools. Our children are well aware of the potential for a school shooting, even at that elementary school level. They're scared. We're the ones who could help aid their fears. In a comprehensive school shooting study, the Secret Service and Department of Education found that 93% of school shooters plan the attack in advance. When people see the signs and get help, we could end school shootings. An SRO, among other things that we've already learned, is a huge form of deterrence. They see things, they witness things that no other person can, and they could help stop. We saw this in Nashville. It was shown that the shooter chose a school that did not have an SRO. So a lot of my facts were already taken. I think I did a lot of evidence and research. The best research I did today was with my son, Owen, my fifth grader. He told me that, when I told him I was coming to the board meeting and why, he told me that last year in his fourth grade at Roaring Brook, there was an officer on-site for a portion of the year in addition to the security officer that stays up front. I said to him, "Did you like when there was an armed school officer at Roaring Brook?" Owen, "Well, yeah, I felt way more safer." I said, "Did you get, I asked, 'Did you get to know him? What did you think of him?'" "Oh, my God, he was so nice." I told him that I was coming tonight to talk about getting SROs at the elementary school level and middle schools in Chapakua. Can I get one more minute, please?
You know what? We're giving everyone the same amount of time tonight. I'm sorry.
Can I just say his answer?
We have to, you know what? We have to be fair to everyone, so we really appreciate you making the comment and I'm sorry to cut people off abruptly.
I was aware in the past that if you could ask for one minute, you would be granted it.
I know, but that's why I said at the beginning, we knew that there's a lot of people tonight. We want to make sure to get everyone in. So we thank you very much for your comments and we're just applying it evenly all around. If you don't mind giving it to Lisa, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name's Jamie Goldstein. Wasn't planning to speak, but this is my first board meeting too. And here we are. So I'm going to keep this really brief. I really think that everybody had great statements to make, great facts, everything. I really just want to make a point to say, you know, I moved here three years ago largely for the school district and the community. I'm really impressed by that 720 plan. You know, I did not know that existed and I think that that is fantastic and great. But, you know, I want to just bring to attention what I think is really the main reason that we're all here. It's for the safety of our children. I leave for work every day before my kids get up. I don't see them until they get home. I moved here specifically for a great school, a great education, a great community. And overall, you know, like that kind of just safety encompasses all of those things, right? Unfortunately, the day that the false shooting happened, I was in a meeting. I didn't get to see that message for two hours because I didn't have my phone on me. And as a parent, I mean, that's just your worst absolute nightmare. And I think, again, just to kind of like bring it all together, this is really just all about us wanting our kids to be in a place where they feel safe. And being a parent who is not anywhere close to their children all day long, an hour and a half that it would take me to get home, it's just a very disheartening feeling that this is even occurring. We are so, so lucky that nothing actually happened, but it shouldn't have taken this. It should have already been in place. And I really just hope that this occurring is going to make it so that, you know, it's not even a question that the SROs in each of the schools is going to happen. That's it.
Okay. I think that's the end of comment. Did anyone want to make any comments after tonight? Oh, okay. You're welcome.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Seeing if other people wanted to step up. My name is April Cohen. I'm actually, I'm not going to bore you with a lot of detail because I previously, prior to making my statement today, emailed each and every one of you individually. I want to thank Hillary for responding and Dr. Ackerman, thank you for acknowledging my email. I do believe that there are sensitive facts in my email that I don't really feel comfortable putting in a public forum. But I did want to say this to all of you in following up on my email. I'll share with you that when I started my career out of school, I was in a role where I had a lot of power to make very important decisions about people's lives. And I had a boss at that time say to me, "April, so long as every decision you make, you are guided by doing what is right, then you'll never have a problem." And I've used that throughout my entire life. And I am now asking each and every one of you, when you go back to your room behind closed doors, please be guided by doing the right thing for our children and nothing else. My number one concern, well, I have many concerns, as you know, from my email, but my number one concern moving forward after the meetings with Dr. Ackerman and Mrs. Allspa was that I am not sure that the school district is being guided by people who actively respond to shootings every day. And if you're not being guided by those types of people who are in the trenches, doing the work, who know what happened when an active shooter begins shooting and knows things like the 911 system, how long it takes people to pick up the phone and call 911, how long it takes for a 911 call to be routed to the right people to respond. If you're not listening to those things and knowledgeable about those things, then you can't make the right decision. And, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. The bottom line is, and I've heard a lot of people talk about deterrence, yes, I know SROs, you know, may deter an active shooter, but more importantly, they are the first line of response to protect our kids and make sure that every other police enforcement agency can immediately respond and defuse the threat. And that equates to the number of bodies you will see. I'm going to ask you two questions to be guided by.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
You can leave that with Lisa. Thank you so much.
My name's Warren Gottlieb. I have two kids at Greeley. There were three points I just wanted to make somewhat, you know, they may seem trivial in the context of the discussion that's going on here. I will just say, I do have two students at Greeley and, you know, I do feel safer that there is an SRO there and their experience has been largely very positive. And I feel for the families with younger children. Just three points. On the issue of tenure, I do feel somewhat, I think maybe one way to address the situation that's come up tonight is, I don't know if the board is allowed to do this or the administration. And if you are doing this and I'm unaware of it, I apologize. But maybe it would help at the beginning of each school year and a few times prominently during the school year, if you could let parents know which teachers are up for tenure that year so that they have an adequate advance opportunity to share with you their thoughts. If that's not something that the district, for legal reasons or otherwise, is able to do, if there's anybody from the PTA here tonight, I would ask, perhaps, that maybe you could do that in each of the buildings that you service and also the Chapakua Congress of Teachers. I think if you're allowed to make that clear, I think that would be helpful. I am sad to see Ms. Mitchell go. She was one of my son's favorite teachers. She made a real impact on his life and I wish I had had an opportunity and knew that she wasn't going to be coming back. Two other quick points. Tutors. There are a lot of families who are being forced to lay out a lot of money on tutors. And I'm not talking about the families who are just going to lay it out just to do it. I'm talking about families who really don't want to use tutors for key subjects and/or who can't afford to do that or keep up with many of the families in this town. And, you know, I think we need to start looking at this more closely. This is becoming a shadow tax burden on our families and it's not going to go away anytime soon. So I really, I'm hoping, looking forward to the next school year that this is something, I realize Warren and Janie won't be here, but the administration and the new board looks at. And finally, in my last 30 seconds, I understand why we have the three-minute rule and frankly, I agreed with it when it was imposed because I understood why it was happening at that time. And the school board does need to get through its business at its meetings and it can't be disrupted and I fully understand that. I think maybe in the next year, what I'm hoping the new board will consider is perhaps maybe once a quarter, once every six to eight weeks, have a separate 90-minute session with Q and A. If people don't behave, stop doing it, but at least give them the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lauren Willner. I have two girls in the Chapakua School District, one in West Orchard and one at Seven Bridges. I don't have a ton prepared, but I'm here to talk about the safety issue. One of you tonight said that we can only do so much when it comes to safety. And I just feel like that's not enough. And sitting here, listening to everybody talking and the amazing things that people are saying and surrounded by all my friends, mothers and fathers that are crying, thinking that this could be our children, it just feels like we can never do enough. So when we're talking about like we can only do so much, like whatever it is that we're doing, we have to be doing more. Why wouldn't we do all that we can and why would we wait until something, God forbid, happens to say, "Okay, let's do more. Let's add more. Let's look back and see what we can do better." Instead of staying here today, what is the most that we can do? What is the best that we could do for our children to have them feel safe, for us to kiss our kids goodbye and get on the bus, knowing that we're going to put them in the best-case scenario that they're in? Right now, I know I don't feel like they're in the best-case scenario and it makes me second-guess sending my kids to school every single day. So as a parent, as somebody in this community, I would want to know that we're doing the absolute most that we can. And if we can all sit here and say, "You know what? Tonight, we made the decision. We're going to do the best that we can. We're doing every single thing that we can do," then we should feel really good about it. But I know I don't feel like that. I know I wanted to get up to talk because I could say, "This is as much as I can do. I've got to do everything that I can to make my kids feel as safe." And I hope that we can all sit here and say, "You know, we're going to put every effort that we can to make our kids feel safe." Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Owana Shoal. I have two kids in the schools, one at Bell and one at Greeley. I'm also a school social worker in a high school in a different area. And so I kind of come at this from two different perspectives. I'm not really going to speak to the SRO thing because I'm honestly a little bit on the fence and I'll just leave it to other people who really want that and want to advocate for that. I don't have a huge opposition to it. But what I wanted to talk about is, you know, if you look at some of the data on who the perpetrators are of some of the school shootings, and I'm looking at the Secret Service website right now, which did a whole study on averting targeted school violence, and they looked at all of the information about all of the publicly available data on attacks and averred attacks. And so 95% of the perpetrators were current students. 90% were current students in completed attacks. The averred ones were 95. And, you know, coming from my lens as a mental health professional within the schools, I know that we are... I think the more staff there is available that has time and space in their day to be able to just look around and be at meetings and just have on their radar, hey, who's, which kid here is struggling? You know, is there a kid here that doesn't have a connection? Is there somebody that people are always talking about that's kind of acting out? And is there a different lens we can take on this and a different person that might be able to reach out to them? Um, you know, I find that prevention is the most comforting to me. The other piece that I really would want the school district to look at is threat assessment and how consistent is it across different staff members? Because you can do great training, but then the next year you hire a new staff member who hasn't had that great training or just isn't as good at implementing whatever, you know, whatever they need to do in terms of questioning, uh, a student that is making angry or threatening statements. So I think that piece of being really measured and really standardized about how those threat assessments are done and being very capable at assessing is so incredibly crucial and to me, much more important than the SRO piece. Um, I, I did, am I done? Okay. No worries. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tim McNamara. I grew up here in Chappaqua. I have three children who are pre-kindergarten age. I've met you all before. It's good to see you guys. Uh, I'd like to speak on a couple of things. First, on teacher retention, none of my kids are in the school district yet, so I don't have any personal experience, but I've heard anecdotally a number of stories like Mr. Halloran. Parents reporting teachers that really impacted their children, yet that teacher had to resign because they were not, it was communicated to that teacher that they would not be offered tenure. Um, I'm sure it's a really complex issue and there's probably a lot of sides to it, again, that I don't know. But hearing so many people advocate for Mr. Halloran tonight, it made me feel sad that someone who had so much impact clearly on so many students was not determined to be someone who should continue with the school district. Again, maybe there are reasons for that. Um, I know, Andrew, you went through a lot of detail on the process for how we grade teachers, um, but what I didn't really hear much on, I know you presented all the different books on how we, what is a skillful teacher. So I'm really, I'm interested and I will look into those to see what evaluation metrics are being used in these, um, observation periods. But my question is, you know, is it, is it helping, um, how effectively teachers can help students develop mental frameworks, excitement to learn, or is it more about imparting knowledge, um, and imparting facts? I know in my experience, the teachers that most motivated me were the ones who made me feel like I mattered, helped me feel excited about anything, whether it was the subject at hand or something else, that lit that fire within me to learn. It sounded like to me like Mr. Halloran did that for a lot of kids here. And I would think that imparting that excitement is the real task of education, whether or not you actually did well on the test in that class. I want to switch really quickly then to talk about SROs. I'd also like to advocate for placing SROs, um, in each school. I'd like to thank all the speakers who provided great information. I particularly like to thank the law enforcement prosecutor. My intuition says she's probably the greatest expert on school resource officers, school shootings in this room. What I'll speak to, what she spoke to was the importance of response time, four minutes. My expertise, I'm the chief of the New York City Fire Department, our expertise is providing pre-hospital medical care to victims. And in all the exercises, training we do with the NYPD, their focus is on engaging a shooter as quickly as possible and out, which then permits us to go in and get victims and provide lifesaving care. Having an SRO would help as opposed to the 10-minute response times roughly for each school. Thank you.
Okay. My answer.
Um, I'm going to ask for a five-minute break before we continue with the meeting. Somebody want to take a short break? If that's okay.
Yeah, I just, um, before we, before we take a break, I just.
I want to say though, I know we, if anyone has an opportunity to say things, so.
Yeah, so listen, I am, I want to acknowledge that, and I appreciate the comments that are directed basically at me and the weight of my responsibility in trying to figure out, you know, what the best next steps are for this district in terms of school safety. And, um, everyone who spoke tonight, I hear what you're saying and I understand your position and, um, I appreciate you taking time to come out tonight and expressing yourself and sharing your thoughts with me. And I'm, and I understand, um, the responsibility that I have to make sure that all the students and staff in this district are safe. And, um, that's not lost on me. I also know how important it is for our community, our whole community, that when we make decisions, that we, we go through a process and we provide opportunities for multiple, um, pathways for people to give us feedback. And I think that that is, um, what has worked best for us when we're making decisions. And that's the process that we're engaging in right now because adding, uh, staff in the way that, um, is being advocated for tonight is a big decision for us. And I know that, um, while there's many members of our public that think that should be an easy decision for us, it has many factors and layers attached to it that need to be considered. And so, um, we're going through a process that I think is important for us to fully realize and will put me in the best place to present to the Board of Education what our options are and to, and to make a recommendation for your consideration. Um, and I know that that doesn't feel quick enough and it doesn't feel urgent enough and I, and I appreciate that and I understand where people are coming from and, um, with that position, but I do think it is the best pathway forward for our community. Um, and so I really look forward to the feedback that we'll receive from our parents, from our larger community and from our staff on the survey that was sent out earlier this week. And we'll continue to remind people to fill it out. We're going to carve out some time for our staff to complete it, um, before one of their faculty meetings because everyone's voice is important. And, um, it's why we engaged a third party to administer the survey because we wanted to make sure that it was impartial. And all my language around it that I sent out is intentional, so it's not biased. And so we're doing our best to try to present, um, options for, for consideration where people could truly express themselves without feeling that, a pressure of responding in a certain way or that, so they're not influenced by me or any other factors. And so, um, I'm really, um, looking forward to, um, understanding what the results of that survey is. And I am, I'm also happy to share that, you know, we, I get updates on, every day on the completion rate and it's, it's, it's higher this year than it was at this time than it was in the fall and I anticipate that it will go up. And so, um, I look, I will let the community know when, um, that the survey is ready for the board and we'll present, present that publicly. So.
I also just, um, I will add as well that, um, as many of the board members, we, you know, this, these, um, safety and security forums that were run by Dr. Ackerman were so that, that the administration could speak directly to the community, but a lot of us just took place, I mean, came and observed. Our place was to just observe so that we could understand how the community felt. And, and we've talked to some people, I know several of the board members after these forums and, and we know that because, I mean, we've been, we've been told that just the very setup of these meetings and us being separated from people and being up on this stage can sometimes feel intimidating, the structure of our meetings, which is really our board meeting that you get to watch, limited public comment, et cetera. It makes people feel as if we are separate and I really feel like it's important for everyone to understand that every single one of us up here wants what you want. We want our kids as safe as possible. We're all very fearful of the gun violence that is escalating in this country. We all live in this community and we want the same things. We just feel that you elected us to represent you, to find the best way to make that greater sense of safety possible. And we take it extremely seriously. And just because we're sitting up here doesn't mean that we are not feeling the same way about our thoughts and our cares and our concerns. And as we say all the time, and it's not just out of, you know, rote memorization or anything like that, we ask you to try and seek us out outside of this because it is a business meeting and we can have very meaningful conversations outside of this and we're always available. So I just want to reiterate again that we really are all in this together, along with the administration, trying to find with a sense of urgency, I know you have it, we have it too, how to keep everybody in this community as safe as possible. And we just are continually working on that and we really appreciate you responding to the survey. And we made sure that there were opportunities for people to write in and give some extra feedback if we felt something was missing and we will take it all into consideration. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Does anybody have anything else they want to say? Okay. Uh, we are going to take a brief five-minute break and then we'll be back for the remainder of our meeting. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn for five minutes? Second? All in favor? Okay. Back in five.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I will move to reopen the public meeting at 9:51. Can I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5, these are first readings of our policies that were discussed during the superintendent's report. Policy 0125 is our wellness policy, first reading. Um, do we, is there a comment that we?
I think maybe, well, in, in the essence of time, since we've already gone through what the major changes are, perhaps if the board or the community has comments, they would like the policy committee to consider they can send those to us in email?
Right. Um, I have one off the bat that I think there's a grammatical thing. You want me to just send that by email? Or just say?
You want to share? You want to share?
Um, with the, um, hold on, it is the wellness policy on mental health. Hold on, I'm just trying to pull it up in the agenda. Oh, I want to pull up my correct file here. Um, all right, I'm just going to enlarge it because of my terrible eyesight. Okay. When it says that the district shall offer mental health education, et cetera, it said the third bullet point, decrease the stigma around mental health and normalizing efforts towards obtaining, I, I, I think it, and should it be normalize? Not normalizing?
I think that sounds right.
What?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, normalize, not.
We'll make that adjustment.
So just that, yeah, around mental health and normalize efforts towards obtaining. That was it. That's my one comment.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay. Um, and, um, okay, so we won't read through the others because we did, unless, does anyone have comments on the other policies, inventory, capitalization, extra classroom activities, or conflicts of interest? Anyone want to say anything at this point?
No.
No? Okay. So we're not approving anything, so that can be submitted before the next reading then if anyone has any additional comments. Okay? Great. That brings us on to four recommended.
Yeah. I recommend 4.1, instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I will second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2, non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to item five, our consent agenda. We use our consent agenda to make more effective use of our time by adopting in a single motion relatively routine matters. Um, if anyone wishes to discuss any particular item individually, that can pull, be pulled out of the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda is items 5.1 through 5.8, I believe. And that encompasses our CSE summaries generally, some CSF, CSF insta grants and a traditional grant as we discussed, um, election personnel for the upcoming budget and assorted matters. Does anyone want to pull anything out of tonight's consent agenda? Okay. Well, then can I have a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.8? Ryan? Can I have a second? Hillary, any questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, did you have?
I was just going to say that I think the, the CSF grants are really super cool and especially like we had the opportunity, I've lost track of time, but a couple of meetings ago, to meet with the students, um, engaging in the works around sustainable fashion and that whole initiative. And I think it's such an amazing overlap of sustainability goals and the, the steam and design work and economics. And I, I just think it's such an amazing sort of forward-looking project that these students are engaging in. And I think it's amazing that we're, we're doing that kind of work and.
I, I'm glad you brought that up and I second that. And the only thing I would add is we, we got a little bit of that when we had our tour of the Sustainability Center. And, um, I was just struck by really how excited and engaged those fashion students were, just by the actual work they were doing, um, how much time they spend there, what a great space it is for them and the sustainability aspect. And I, I just loved sort of the recycling of all the clothing because we do know how much that ends up in landfills. So thank you for mentioning that. I think it's, it's great. It's an unbelievable program. Oh, and last thing, I'm sorry. Um, I know that from, um, traditionally, the traditional grants are done during a specific season and we already approved those. So was this something that was added on later and they did this specially to sort of get the ball rolling? Uh, that was, I meant to ask that earlier, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks for the question. The World Economics Learning Lab has been in the works since the beginning of the year. The, um, Innovation Committee, which the CSF partners with us on, Todd was part of the grants, you know, he was, he's the grants chair and he was part of our subcommittee that was working on the well. Um, so they've, they've indulged us to be off-cycle with regard to Innovation Committee large grants. So they normally have that large grant timeline, which is due in the fall, but they, for a few years now, have, have worked with a different cycle for the Innovation Committee because they're part of the development then. So they don't seem to be, they're not surprised by those grants that come out of the Innovation Committee. So we certainly appreciate that flexibility, but that's why that one larger 39,000 grant is kind of off-cycle.
Okay. Thanks for saying that, that there's a distinction there with the Innovation Committee grants. Okay. Um, anybody else?
Well, just congrats to those students. They did such a great job. I mean, I was part of it the whole way through and they really owned it. So, uh, it's just great to see them getting that practice, that doing that kind of thing too, because that's how the real world works. You gotta go and make your pitch sometimes. They really came through.
No, it's great. Okay. So all in favor of items 5.1 through 5.8?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, facilities, anything? No? Nothing under financials? Notice of future meetings. Um, well, Tuesday, May 16th is our election, not actually meeting, but that's 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
It's a long meeting.
What?
It's a long meeting.
It's a long meeting. Um, our annual election and budget vote. And again, that's in the Harsh-Greeley Auditorium. And then we will have a meeting after that, a Thursday night meeting, which is a little unusual for us, but that's what we do after our budget vote, Thursday, May 18th, 2023. That will also be our tenured teacher recognition. Um, and that will be here at 7:30 at the Harsh-Greeley High School Auditorium. Um, and it is now 9:59. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Can I have a second? Kaylee? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.